All right, I'd like to reconvene our public meeting and ask you to stand for the pledge, please. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a, we don't report out a closed session tonight. Have a motion, please, to adopt our agenda. Some look.
A second.
And maybe, are there any changes or additions in agenda?
No.
The board members, um, well, an agenda on paper.
Aye.
Close, here is four oh one. We have no recognitions tonight. We have public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on an item not on the agenda? And then we'll move to reports. Our student rep, report.
Thank you.
Um, this week at El Moro, grades three through five started CASP testing. Their fifth grade orientation will be held at Thurston tomorrow night, and their new parent orientation is Thursday at 6:00 P.M. on campus. At Top of the World, they also began state testing this week for third through fifth graders, and will be celebrating their respectability month during the month of May. Students will be focusing on the unique physical and intellectual differences among Top of the World. They will have several guest speakers scheduled throughout the month and weekly hands-on activities. They hope to increase awareness and understanding of our student and staff differences. By doing so, every classroom will be able to open up the lines of communication regardless of uniqueness, inclusiveness, and how to overcome adversity with a positive outlook. Thurston will be holding a web presentation in the gym during ESP this Thursday for all sixth and seventh graders to let them know how they can be involved in PALS, ASB, and leadership next year. Thurston completed their first week of CASP testing this week and are now working to prepare for their open house event next Thursday.
This week at LHS is Spirit Week. Um, in preparation for our Back to the Future theme prom, we held a movie night last Friday to watch the film, and clothes came with snacks to sell. Um, all this week, we're holding activities in the quad at lunch, um, so that each class competes for the points in the Clash of Classes competition. The winning class will win a giant trophy in hopes to boost spirit before the pep rally. Students are in their second week of AP testing and are working hard to finish strong. Uh, the LHS Drama Department will be performing their version of Little Shop of Horrors next weekend from May twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth in the Thurston Black Box. Um, it stars a small cast, including Chloe Bryan and Joseph Cobney as the leads, Timor and Audrey. Um, tomorrow at our meeting in ASB, we will be reporting that the student board process was passed by the board at the last meeting. On behalf of Breaker Athletics, we have just concluded our first full year in the Sunset Conference. We captured league championships in boys' and girls' cross-country, girls' tennis, volleyball, and water polo. Our football team also won a league championship in the Golden West Conference. Uh, the increased competition level has been great for our teams and student athletes. Our surf and sand volleyball teams compete in separate leagues organized regionally. Our girls' surf team recently won a state championship, and girls' sand volleyball was state runner-up. The twenty eighteen nineteen school year has been very successful on the playing field as well as in the classroom for our student athletes. Our teams can still be seen working out daily as we start to prepare for next year. Thank you.
Good to you. Any questions? Sarah for CSCA?
I'm sorry for a little bit, but I switch you guys around.
Which one do you want?
You. Go one or two? Short, but sweet. Thank you for the towels. Teacher appreciation. We, we all feel appreciated in many ways. So, in many things that you guys all do for us, and you make sure that we have everything we need to do our job throughout the year, and trainings and all of that, so. And the towel is just a bonus, so thank you so much.
Margaret?
Thank you for the appreciation gift also. I think everybody was surprised when they found them in the mailbox. I have mine on a little area. The kids think it's adorable. Tomorrow, we're having our recognition party over at the high school on the patio at three thirty for employee, uh, classified employee of the year. We don't have any retirees this year officially, so, um, we won't be celebrating that, but I think you should come by. We have a few special gifts for a few special people. It's a surprise. And our negotiations is continuing, and very positive, interest-based process as we move through all of the things that we have to address within our various articles that we've opened. And in one last note, I have been, this will surprise everyone, I've been chosen to go to Las Vegas to be the delegate for CSCA. I'll let it happen in years, but, um, uh, Will and I will plan to attend, represent our future by school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members? I have nothing.
Uh, I attended community coalition, and, um, they are for self-armed Kenny. Our community coalition has members who are part of self-armed Kenny. And so they do a norming stat with our kids and then some of the kids from Kappa. Second is part of Kappa, you know, section of Kappa.
Oh, sorry, yes.
The alternate.
And, uh, and so last year, they did the norming stat of how many kids do not drink alcohol. And our normative self-armed Kenny is seventy-two percent. And I have to say, we were all excited. That is now eighty-two percent of kids in self-armed Kenny do not drink alcohol. Now marijuana use just stayed even, but vaping went up, and they're still waiting for us to data around that, to get this number on that. But eighty-two percent of teenagers in self-armed Kenny do not drink.
Do you know on the vaping, does it have, just if it was vaping, you just nicotine, or if it was vaping, using other things? Do they break it down?
Um, I don't. Dr. Keller and I asked, I don't know if they were clear on what they're gonna put back. I promise I'll share. We did ask that. They were not clear on what they were, they have a company that analyzes all that. They put the data, then they analyze it.
Cause that would be good to know.
Of whether they're putting something else in it.
Right.
Which we got to. If they don't, maybe not sure they can ask, if they didn't ask, sure, their question to control that.
Because that use is really dangerous.
Right, right. And so that's what we're asking, is whether it's marijuana, state, same as that, using vaping, or using that as a vaping. And so Will and I, and hopefully, we'll know the answer when we get back to this.
I attended PTA council, and it tended to evolve into a lot of discussion on science camp. So there was a lot of interest in that, trying to figure out, you know, funding and who to fund it or. And, uh, Sarah Durant also came and gave a really good report, I think, to those there about school power and what they fund. I have to say, I thought, I think it's really complimentary, Sarah, that she's looking at not always being the same things when they get the message out to donations. She's interested in having it be very authentic, and what actually is, they're just the same thing year after year. Then I attended Endowment, and they were, um, doing teacher grants. Jeff was able to stay longer than I was, but they, um, were very involved with that, and they'd done some additional research. Um, they actually went to some of the folks and asked if they wanted more. They are really keen on, um, doing those teacher grants and providing as much as they can, so that was a good, a good discussion. And I don't know, Jeff, do you wanna add? Did they get into their other projects, that signature project?
That didn't come up.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Ford?
As you heard from our student board reps, it's testing season. Um, I think the only test that maybe we did talk about was the physical fitness test. That's also going on. So, uh, physi- season, I know a lot of students, um, uh, are finishing up their AP tests this week. Students over there also. Very happy that this week will be coming to a close hopefully. But, uh, this year, we had a banner year for our total number of tests, seven hundred and eighty tests. Continuing to grow our program. Um, special thanks again to the school and our staff for continuing to find ways to, uh, support our students. And, uh, our goal is to find a way to have at least one student, or at least a student take one test before they graduate. Get exposure to college in some way, shape, or form, so. Uh, great work over there. Um, and again, uh, hopefully, um, are, we're able to manage any site issues related to, uh, electricity, which we lost power two sites yesterday morning. Uh, came back on, uh, but thanks to the principals, um, Jenny and Mike for navigating that, uh, those challenges that came with that. And, um, we were able to keep the kids there and get, keep school going as usual, so. Nice work.
I just wanted to echo, um, what Margaret and Sarah had shared about. We celebrate this week as our Employee Appreciation Week, so we can get hit both groups. So last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, next week is Classified School Employee Appreciation Week. So, um, thank you for everything that you do, um, talking to you as representatives of the, you know, over three hundred and fifty regular employees that we have here in the district that we're very appreciative of. And we have our, um, annual Employee Appreciation Barbecue on June nineteenth. We'll be celebrating you all again there. Thank you. Jeff?
So Governor and Leader Cribson came out, who provided you some information, but a few of us are gonna go to the School Services and California Conference next week. We'll buy more and, uh, future board updates as well as the JPC.
Thank you. Seems to be good support for education.
Yeah.
Alicia?
Hi, so, thank you. We are in the midst of meeting, uh, Krista Kells and I are meeting in the place for eight with the sites and the site reps. Uh, El Moro has received their planner, and we're underway for planning for next year. Training for history, social, and science textbooks is coming up in the next few weeks, so thank you for your support with that. We're in the midst of summer school, uh, planning CASP, and thank you for your support with coming out to Tennesse, but we appreciate that.
Thank you. Does Sarah have anything to say?
Come on, your report.
Are you squat?
You don't need to, I didn't know.
Absolutely. Sure. Okay.
Where do you go?
That's not where I came.
Speak your name.
Hi, Sarah Durant, thanks for being director of School Power. Uh, very appropriate report, but I'll talk about last night, which was phenomenal. We had a great event, uh, to benefit our schools. So Hobie and the Ranch put on a very unique golf tournament for us. This is our fourth year doing it. And a hundred percent of proceeds for A's do benefit School Power because they generously underwrite the whole event.
That's great.
We sold out golf within a week, um, and we had about seventy-six golfers this year, which is capacity for that event. Plus, we added about a hundred diners, so we had a big barefoot barbecue afterwards. Super successful. The event was phenomenal. There is an ad hoc live auction that Mark Christie runs himself, and we never quite know what's gonna happen. Um, and this year, we raised, we're still totally up real numbers, but I can give you a ballpark number, and it's gonna be about over sixty-two thousand.
Wow.
So that is a great effort.
Wow.
Um, and we, on our end, as we head towards the end of the year, we have our Business Alliance Dinner next week, where we do, um, in a thank you to our business supporters, our directory advertisers, and our Business Alliance members, and our Real Estate Honorable members. Um, we all get together for cocktails at The Montage, which is, again, provided by The Montage, um, which is wonderful. And that's a chance for them to network with other businesses and supporters, and for us to tell us, tell them a little bit about the impact they've had throughout the year. We're also working on our, wrapping up our annual report for the year-end that we mail out to all donors. Um, we have our big trustee dinner coming up on June second. Again, we gather, we offer some awards to people who've had a big impact on our schools through their participation. So, overall, exciting time of year. I will be back at the next board meeting, hopefully with a large check.
Congratulations on your first year.
Yes, yeah, proud.
Scum my fast around.
Yes.
Now, are there others that worked with Mark on the, on the golf cart?
Um, Mark Christie is, you know, the big owner, but we absolutely work with the entire team at the ranch. So Kurt Dorkman, who's a nominal, is the general manager of the ranch, and his team there. And, uh, and the golf club is heavily involved, Brian and Shishaber.
It's a lot of support.
A lot of support from the ranch, big support from Jake and the team at Hobie as well. So, yeah, it's amazing. The ranch is really, um, you know, becoming part of this community, and it's a great gathering place for all of us.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay, next we have our consent calendar. Uh, Debbie, I'm Zep for numerous reports. Are there, um, motion, please, in a second? Are there, is there any question, any questions? I just had a comment on, um, the ones, there's, there's, there's two pages that are saying, so just pull those out. Oh, do a little bit, I forgot, I will. I forgot to ask for public comment, public comment, it's on backwards, sorry. And now our student rep?
Yes.
Board members on paper.
Aye.
Close, here is four oh one. We have two information items tonight, and our first item is, uh, Technology Services Update. Mike Lawson.
Uh, President Victor's members of board, we just thought it would be good, uh, to give you an update on the work we've been doing in technology. We gave you an update in October, and so this is, we thought we'd follow up that with an update on how we're doing with our research project, digital literacy, and computer science. So we thought that it would be appropriate to inform that. To start out with, I'll show you a few statistics. Uh, these are from our single sign-on app that we call Beachport. It's, it's where the kids, the students, they use that to log into apps. Now, the stats on this are just for Beachport. If they go directly to an app, it's not gonna show up here. So, you gotta kind of weigh that, because it's gonna be more for some apps. But this is kind of the usage by month, so you can see that March is our busy month so far of this year. Been interesting. With, uh, close to forty-five thousand logins. These are the apps that get used most often from Beachport. Uh, and you can see the top one is Connected, which is a combination of two apps, Wonders and Study Sync, uh, which is our ELA, ELD, uh, applications. The second one is our learning management system, Power School Learning, and then you can kind of see down the list what, what students are clicking on, on, in Beachport. So if Google Drive was not, kids, kids go directly to drive, it would probably be number one, even though, uh, because a lot of kids don't click on Beachport to get there. This is the logins for the year so far, and this is Beachport, and interesting to see the peak hours right in the morning between eight and nine. The peak day is Tuesday, which I thought was interesting, and we're about at eighth usage on the weekends, which is good. And Sunday is the peak day on the weekends, and we're gonna talk about March. So I'd like to introduce you to Stephanie Gabash. She's our district librarian.
Hi. Thank you for having me. So since the summer, when we got together with the teachers from Thurston and the high school to incorporate and figure out what the research protocols were, since then, the last eight months, I have been working on collaborating with the teachers to bring those skills into the classroom. So, to start off, we actually gave a benchmark, and in the benchmark, as you can see, it says we were at a proficiency of thirty-three point nine percent with the skills that we were testing on, which included MLA, use of databases, Boolean searching, and things like that. We expected it to be a little bit low, given the fact that the students really had not had access to a wide range of databases, and had never been specifically instructed in things like Boolean searching. So over the course of the year, I've done over a hundred presentations with thousands of hours in the classroom, with the teachers, collaborating with them, and do mini projects and things like that. And then we retested just recently, and the proficiency did build up. It is at forty-six point eight. We were hoping it to be a little bit higher, but we know we're on the right track, and we're expecting next year's to be even better, especially since I'm almost fully incorporated into the GSS course at the high school, which is kind of fun now, doing like little mini projects within. So my model has changed as the courses have, or sorry, as the years progress. The other thing I wanted to show you was actual database use, so you guys can get an idea. So before I was here, none of these existed. Now, we've, we've had the privilege of getting the California-provided ones, which is Britannica and ProQuest. Britannica, as you can see, is already sitting at over seventy thousand searches. ProQuest Search, which is two databases of the ProQuest group, there's like five or six in there. We have over thirteen, uh, thousand items that have been actually looked at, which is really awesome. Of the district-provided databases, Gale, we have over fifteen thousand searches, which, that's only been available since December. So we're already on the rise on that. It's doing amazing. And then the last one, Sora. So Sora is our online audio and electronic books. And we're already sitting at over two thousand ebooks and a thousand audiobooks, and constantly getting emails and requests for additional resources, because students are like, wait, but this book isn't on there. I got you, and I'll make sure I get some others. So they're like really excited with the fact that it can be building and can grow based on what their needs are.
And then, and Sora, which is overdrive, can also support professional growth. Should we have some, uh, books in there for, for our administrators and staffs? And those are, those are great stats. Thanks. So, just quickly introduce Brian Cool. He's our, uh, teacher for Almetry and Tessa for, for Almetry students. Hundred percent much.
And I would say about Sora, my, my two sons, fourth grader and second grader, they cannot get enough of Sora. They're, they're really bummed out when the books not there, they wanna read, but that's a number one place to go with the books that he is on. Um, but it does seem like just yesterday that I was here telling you all what we're gonna do this year, and if I can't believe that we're back, and if you can tell you what we did this year. And I think we did some great stuff for kids. Uh, I, I, I took, recently took a three-hour long course on how to make a great presentation. And, uh, one thing it said, one, one thing that my awesome presenter said was never read was on slide, we read one, three words for you. The foundations for success. I think we really did provide that for our kids this year in computer science. Uh, we had a plan in place, and since it was brand-new, we didn't know if that plan was gonna work out like we intended it. Um, but I think we found that it really was successful for each, I think each and every lesson that I taught, each and every lesson that Carrie Denton taught to our first kindergarten, first grade students, and all my computer science lessons that our, uh, our IAs taught, I think we found they all included the force, because they create, create, critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, and communication. And looking back on it, given what we're tasking the kids to do, it's not surprising, because there's never been an app, a piece of software, a piece of hardware that's been created without those four things. And so since we're, that's the, since we're trying to provide the foundations for our kids to be able to do those things, it makes sense that it's in there too. Uh, so the next one we're showing second, one I'm most proud of. I know you've all heard of the Hour of Code that, uh, you know, that's been going around for the past four or five years. We did not provide our students the Hour of Code this year. We provided our students with almost thirty thousand hours of code. And, and this is just, and this, this number is probably really low. Uh, this was just what our second through fifth grader did on, fifth graders did on TechSmart, which is the, uh, platform our students learn to use Python coding language, block-based language, and transition it into the actual syntax of the language. And I got some great data from TechSmart, and this was the number they gave us. In addition to that, we've done additional coding lessons with the kids in robotics that is not included in this number. Carrie Denton, one of our high, our high school, um, AP computer science teachers, been working with our kindergartners and first graders. We call Computer Science Unplugged, giving them the basis, the algorithms, and loops, and conditionals, and that kind of thing, and that's not included in this number. So if we were to include all of that, we'd do well over thirty thousand hours of coding. Our students, that was really exciting, given that last year. A lot of them would have been a big zero in that number there, so it's really cool. Uh, and I also have a little data to share. I had, I gave the kids a little survey a while back, and I asked them a few questions. And so like ones and twos there were the negative responses, fours and fives were the positive responses, and then threes the neutrals. So if we asked the kids if they're looking forward to the coding classes we have, we have almost eighty percent of them saying that they love coming to the coding class, which is great. Less than, you know, less than ten percent of them dislike when the coding, when the coding begins. What I thought was even cooler than that is we have well over eighty, seventy percent, almost eighty percent, saying that they feel positive using the coding techniques in class. And again, less than ten percent physically, they don't feel successful with what we're doing in class, which is great. I think a testament to our platform that we've selected, uh, to the perseverance our students show, and to the, and not just need the instructors that we have in there working with the kids. Um, and finally, this is one I like the most, we have almost ninety percent of our students saying that they feel like they're better at coding than they were beginning of the year. Uh, we have a few that do degree in strong industry category, and I, I did notice, we do have a lot of kids that I've watched in the classrooms that do have a strong foundation in computer science already. And so one of my goals moving forward to next year is finding ways to diversify and meet those students' needs better than we did this year as well. But I think for a first-year program, the fact that we have, you know, or less than ten percent saying they don't feel better in the work beginning of the year is the pretty cool place to be, a pretty cool place to be. So, although I think our students have grown a lot, and it's been a lot of fun to see where they come from in September to where they are right now.
We continue to work on this. We have, uh, some trainings that we're gonna be offering teachers in the summer to, with TechSmart, and we're combining courses with Fuller, Fuller Tree School District, because they're also using TechSmart. And, um, it's a very effective program. It's not like an exposure, they really learn how to do things with this program, all the codes and stuff. Um, so we thought, we gave you a lot of stats, and we thought, well, we wanna introduce you to some kids that were participating in this program. So we, um, we had Andy Crisp, uh, create this video for us, and he does a great job. So, thanks, Danny.
So this year, we put together a computer science program for our kindergarteners through fifth graders. And our main goal with these kids is to give them the foundations of computer science. We want them to understand computer science, so when they get older and they do start programming, they understand what it is the computers doing, what it is their programs doing, and what it is that they are making the program do. With our younger students, it's a lot of hands-on activity, not necessarily looking at a screen, but programming themselves, programming their teachers, programming their friends, the way they are programming computers. With our third, fourth, and fifth graders, we're using block-based language called TechSmart that translates to Python, an actual programming language, and they're running the foundations, so when they're programmed directly with the syntax later on in life, they know exactly what it is they're programming to.
One of the reasons why I get excited for coding is because I love the new challenges that come over time. Variables allow me to have better control over the sprite's movement, and I can start to use it in plots for later. I don't know what I'm gonna do when I grow up, but I know coding will be a possibility.
Right now, we are doing research to back up debates that, um, we chose topics for yesterday. We're using a lot of data and information, stuff that's got dubbed and cited, so it's a lot easier to do research. The advantage of using a database over Google is that you're not getting filtered results for you, and you're getting valid information, and it's already pre-sighted, so like once you have to do, like, say, a word citation, it's a little lot easier. And it's not only the class usage, but you can also use it when you're doing research for science or for subject studies, it's a lot easier.
There are soft skills that are really important amongst careers that are in high demand but are hard to find, and research skills tie into that. So I teach ways to combine keywords together when you're researching for a book. I also teach the database themselves. I would want the students to leave with all the skills necessary to be successful, whether they go to college, or they go into a trade, or whatever it is that they choose to do. I want them to have the soft skills that are necessary, and the ones that the job they're looking for, the businesses want, but can't seem to find.
For me, I want to go in the medical field, and obviously having the research sources available now will really make a lot easier in the future, especially using a credit database to do research and not just a book. What's the end goal of the digital literacy program that we're implementing in our schools?
And preparing kids for their future. Period.
From sparking a new passion that I can't wait to learn more about.
To helping me become a more capable researcher and discover a truth.
Creating students that are logical, creative, yet nimble.
Will get discovered and rediscovered.
A love of learning.
The twenty-first century is here.
And I'm not stopping until I reach my full potential.
All right.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you for the equity of that. All, all the data in here is student data, right? Most of it, I mean, you referenced one thing.
Most, most of it because there's student apps.
Right.
But there is, uh, the one thing that's not student data is Carrie's app, the one, the one that is.
And you can separate parents from students in access or?
For, on the data.
On Aries, on the Aries portal or?
On that portal, this would be everybody, the, the one, but most of those apps are for kids and teachers, so.
Yeah.
Staff's not putting them on anyways.
Okay. And you've covered all, all the elementary kids?
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
And high school was, was certain classes?
High school has certain classes. There, there's, they're adding apps class, but they have the, the computer science classes that you guys have approved.
I think it's really interesting that you have Carrie Denton working with the little ones, she has this.
Yeah, you know, it was really cool to see her in there too, because she was, she had a little trepidation going into it, and it's obviously a teacher of high school, or one of the kinder or first graders. But, uh, in, in the end, it was fun, because we were watching her teach, and she loved it, the kids loved her. But we found out that a lot of the same techniques that you use in your high school But we found out that a lot of the same techniques that usually your high school wouldn't pay attention were really given kindergarten.
That's great, they made me a veteran.
Well, sure.
Right.
The, should that, when Andy made, I mean, is there any way to share that with School Power then?
Yeah, we will, and yeah, I think that was.
I think they'd like to see what the result was.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, that was a huge effort on part of School Power.
Was pretty.
Funded me.
And research.
And it was nice to see it all kind of culminate this year. Very successful, in my opinion, fund a new campaign that led to great results. And we're keeping Brian on as a to set for next year as well. So I expect we're gonna see seventy thousand hours of code over probably two years. It's gonna be pretty impressive, but you know, I've had the opportunity to go in and see Brian on regular occasions, I just happen to be there. And Brian's in those classes and he, he has the students wrapped around his finger, they love what they're doing. He's also, while he's teaching, our students using really good strategies to keep their attention. Because with technology, we often know that students can try to start moving forward and he has great techniques to manage the classroom. And I think our teachers that might not be as comfortable with the technology get to see somebody who is very comfortable with the technology, able to manage the classroom by using certain techniques. So I've seen that, I don't think I even shared that with him, but I watched that several times in classrooms where he was able to get the students to be right on paying attention. And then when the instructions were gone, off he went, you know, and the students were just amazed, so. And again, the GSS class is gonna be a great opportunity for our students to get access to the research for every single student. And so I think that is a great step in my direction, we'll keep working on it, so.
Margaret.
I was just gonna say, just an input, that with Carrie Denton, I had the opportunity with two different kindergarten classes that I was just filling in in that afternoon. And knowing Carrie Denton, when she knew there was gonna be a sub, and so it was, so we, she did the class and it was fabulous. And the next time, she was like, I'm hoping Margaret's gonna be here again, because it really, it's really great seeing the high school's future interacting with the kinders. It was just wonderful and they, they loved it, it was really a great experience for them along with the teacher.
Thank you very much.
And I didn't ask for public comment, I guess because public is not human. I shouldn't. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
And, and the work that's being done, I mean, I know for our kids going up, when they go to college, authentic research is huge. And they, and if we can give them that foundation, it's gonna be great.
And they did say that benchmark test was hard, it seemed like I, I, it's the first one they were not expecting. They didn't think that was a bunch, so that's, yeah, so I'm so grateful you're here, some of you are.
And we're starting with the K three five next year, so I did go in already to the second grade and discussed a public database, just to be a public go with them. And public goes already got eight thousand looks, so the kids are loving public go right now, but next year is, they get incorporated into the whole thing, so.
That's great, that's great.
Public goes like a little database for kids, which I'm doing.
It's K three five system.
Really nice.
That's exciting. Always something new.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Our next information item is an update on audio visual recording, the boardroom and closed captioning requirements for live streaming during board meetings. Thanks, Warren.
I'm gonna have Mike start it off and then I'll. So a few board meetings ago, we talked about what we were gonna do with audio visual for the boardroom. And we had discussed continuing the Granicus or looking at other solutions. And so you had asked me to look at other solutions, so. One of the issues we have with Granicus was the statistics weren't accurate, so we're thinking like, well, what other things are out there? And so we looked at YouTube, we looked at some other solutions. And we also looked at the equipment that would be necessary to really get better audio. Because as Dee mentioned last time, going back and listening and looking at YouTube and seeing the audio, you see that there, we need more better mics. And we need them to be wired and like a little bit, one for everybody. So we, and we, our current systems doesn't support more mics than we have, it's just limited. So we had thought, well, maybe we should redo this system and rethink it. So we brought in one of, a very good company, Digital Networks, and they kind of gave us a price to redo this, the whole system, which was forty-nine thousand. So it's, it's a pricey amount, but it redoes everything, including the mics and the video and the switching. And it also provides us with a recording ability in-house, so that if, so that we would have that copy here. So not only would we send it to YouTube, which would be a copy in the internet, but you would have a copy here that would be a backup, which would be nice, we don't have that currently. And the good, the other thing that would be good with that is the, the artist theater has been wanting to have a system to switch video for a long time. They've been hoping that they had something and they try to get kids in to help and, and you know, film events and drama in place. But it would be so nice to move this equipment over there, because they would have good equipment that they could switch between cameras and do, do this. There's, there would be an advantage to, to doing this, for them to. And so that's, that's essentially what I researched.
So that, that's my part. The challenge that came up in speaking with Newport Mesa, actually, I was there with Superintendent Navarro in their boardroom. And we were talking about live streaming and he made the comment, you mean you're still live streaming? And I said, yes, he said, well, are you closed captioning? And I said, no, or not, he said, you need to look into that, because we stopped live streaming because of ADA requirements related to closed captioning. So I followed up with Orange County Legal to, to just give guidance on that, related to closed captioning. And it was confirmed, yes, in order to livestream, you are required by law to have closed captioning for livestreaming. So what we're understanding is districts are having to make some challenging choices. So when we heard that, Victoria did some research and all, Victoria kind of talked through what she found out related to some of the services that are out there and what else she knows from other districts.
So I reached out to all of our district friends again and asked if there had been any changes in whether they're live streaming or not live streaming. And the only major change is one district went from live streaming, well, from going to be live streaming to they send a recording to the TV station. Because now it's the TV station's responsibility to close caption if they air it, I mean, if there's any liability there, so they have chosen not to livestream. Talked with a few vendors, the cost for us to have a live typographer for closed captioning would be a hundred and forty to two hundred dollars per hour for that typographer. Not to mention the cost for the system. The minimum cost for the, the typographer would be approximately ten thousand dollars paid upfront. Based on the number of board meetings that we have and the average hour, hours that our board meetings last. If we have additional meetings, the cost would of course go up. If we go over those hours that we originally budgeted for, they bill us at a higher hourly rate. So one forty is the minimum hourly rate, and then it would be adjusted for that for this particular vendor. We're also looking at potentially going to online agendas to meet ADA requirements in other areas. But with that, some of those offer closed captioning, live streaming avenues. So we don't wanna make a decision based on a closed captioning system if we're going to use an online agenda system that has closed captioning options. So we kind of think direction on which way we wanna go.
Yeah, so we, we've got a couple issues here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So one is, right now, moving forward, I need a determination from the board as to their comfort level of being out of compliance with ADA compliance. Now that we're aware, I need direction from the board as to moving forward, until we get a closed captioning system in place, what to do about live streaming. We do close captions the day after, if we can, and that's what we do, is we are able to close code, they're really close captioning at that point. So when we put it up for people to see, that's a big close caption, that's what a lot of districts have gone to. So we need, that's one thing. And then secondly, we need to determine what system, if we're gonna do an agenda online, give me weight. Because right now, and Victoria's research, two of the agenda online folks have said, come back to us this summer, because we're not ready yet, because we're going through some changes.
Oh, okay.
And they brought, last time, one of them brought folks on and then it didn't turn out so well, so they said, wait till we're done, so they can transition. And then lastly, with all of it being said and done, the, kind of give us some direction on bringing back a contract for the fifty thousand dollars approximately to upgrade the boardroom. So, three things.
Yes, that would be nice.
If we were to use Granicus, it will cost an additional yearly fee, about seven thousand dollars. And then we would have to add the closed captioning, which was ten.
Which is quite a lot.
Ten, and then, is there a box for Granicus that we have to add?
Yeah, that was six thousand as well, so there's.
If I could add one other piece, neither companies that I spoke with could guarantee a hundred percent carefree rate, um, process. So as much information as we would frontload them with, your names, your spelling, your pronunciation, same for cabinet, typical words we use, that type of thing. They still can't guarantee that the person they hire could get it, we look at a few really bad ones.
And one, one of the challenges with you is when people talk, you have a discussion. Because when you have a discussion, you sometimes will talk over each other, and that's really hard for YouTube and different systems to close caption. It gets, it doesn't know how to deal with that, it has a hard time.
And that's what board meetings is, is for us to have a discussion in the public, right, not to have a discussion with the public, but in the public, so.
Yeah.
I, I get not to talk over each other, but.
Right, and we watched.
I don't talk about stuff, we talk over each other.
When you. When you, for example, when you vote, we don't roll call vote everything.
Right, right.
So we watched one closed captioned district and I, you could hear them talking that they're voting. It didn't record one person's vote, it didn't even say they voted. It missed it, and it was not a motion, it was an emotion. It was really, really bad.
That was really.
And I was stunned that this issue was putting that up, because I don't see how that's a good faith compliance when you could not follow that board meeting. There's no way, it was impossible even if it was voting at all, so that's kind of where we're at. You started, hand up, Jen.
Just a couple of questions, so if someone comes to a board meeting that's hearing impaired, are we supposed to have a sign language interpreter here or have?
We would if they would let us, yes, we have processes in place, so if somebody, they have to give us notice. So like for any event, school event that we have, we do have a requirement to provide, give us enough notice that, so we can provide that. We provided it at different events in our home campus, we've had a first year graduation for our promotions, our money, we have an interpreter. So we, we do work with that, we work with the language network to provide that, or we work with the county. And the TV out here could provide, if we did have a closed captioning live person, that's what we can choose to do. It could provide the live version help up there, of that.
Yeah, this is the.
We already have, we do have this always on our agenda, reasonable accommodation.
Yeah.
No, I've seen that before, I've just never seen somebody doing sign language reporting.
I suppose we haven't had a request?
No.
Does, do the city councils also have to have this?
Yeah, so they, if they're televised, they typically will use the closed captioning that will come on to the televisions, is my understanding. But yes, everyone, every public agency that livestreams, their meetings is required under laws with council.
So some do it well and some don't.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, Jen and I were talking about a little bit about even the ones you see on TV aren't always that great, that when the TV's doing it. But even the ones that we saw, at least one of the school districts was using, was far worse than even the TV was carrying out, so.
And then, so it sounded like digital networks could do a good job, did you look at anybody else or is that?
We did look at it, we could, we could look at, we could get some other vendors in, we have other vendors that do the same thing, so we could get a, a competitive price.
You're satisfied that you're there.
It's under the bid limit, so it's not required for us to do that, but we, we definitely.
Okay, I just.
But it's fairly reasonable as far as what they're doing, the equipment that we looked at was competitively priced for what it's been cost. But, but we definitely can do that.
Well, I kind of tru, I'm, I kind of trust that you're doing the right thing, I just wanted to ask.
So the three issues we have to hit, so I would say that number one, I'm not comfortable with being non-compliant on, now that we are aware that is our responsibility. So I have a little discomfort with that. I fully support the forty-nine thousand and the new equipment, and this equipment going to the high school, I think it's a great investment, particularly in the microphones and the quality. As far as the closed captioning, I just don't know what the solution is till we have further analysis. Particularly if the online agenda folks are going to be new to it, that's my concern. I'm excited about online agendas, I'd like to not have this, but, so I'm excited about that piece. But I just, I think for me, I'd like more information on the closed captioning. Live costs versus non-live costs would be my information that I would need to make a good decision.
Do we have costs now with what we do, the closed captioning we do on the recording, is there a cost for that?
No, on the Karen. So you two, yeah, and then on the Karen verifies that it looks accurate.
How, how long after the meeting is it the next day that it goes on? So what are the benefits of having a live?
I think it's a liability, that's where I'd plan.
Well, you can't livestream if you don't have the live, we would only, we would have a day after recording, we would no longer have live streaming.
Right, but what are the benefits of live streaming? Do those benefits of paying for the closed captioning outweigh what are they?
Great question, I think the challenge that we've had with Granicus is we don't know how many people actually are watching it live. So we get these snapshots in time and it varies to certain degrees, I mean, at one point we were thinking there was, you know, five people potentially watching, sometimes there was more, but that was not on, that was just a snapshot. It wasn't anything that we were able to kind of track, so that's what's kickstarted a lot of this conversation too.
We don't know if you're watching, just a part of the meeting, the whole meeting.
Right, right, but that's a great question, I don't know that I can answer that. You know, I wasn't here when the initial decision was made to go to, to live streaming and recording, so.
Comments that were made is that people wanted to be able to watch the meeting and not have to come, basically, and it was like for.
They still could if they taped it and they're watching that day.
Right, but I mean, that they wanted to watch that night.
Yeah.
So, you know, the discussion was back and forth, like if, if you don't come to the meeting, you can't interact, you can't, for public comment, I mean, but. It just seemed that that, that's what I remember hearing, with certain people that wanted to be able to not have to come down here and watch the meeting right then while it's going on.
I remember some people talking to us that maybe they were on the baseball team or something, that they wanted to be able to be having dinner or something downtown. And come at the time their item came up.
Right, but that was, that was one person, that's one mind for a person, that's one person who expressed that they want to be able to watch while they're eating dinner and pop in. Sleep at the baseball game and come over.
Yeah, one person expressed that, I don't know how many people that was important.
But I don't see them popping in as one of the entire.
I know, I don't either.
So for the time, I can see people also just pop in who are discussing an item, so I would think that that was one person. And one person did it once, so.
And is there any public comment on this discussion?
Okay, let's see.
Do identify yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Sterling, I'm a resident here in Lakeview Beach. Um, I really look forward to seeing everything, because a lot of times, even if you are at the meeting, it's nice to go back and be able to watch what transpired. I think transparency is very important, I can't think of a better reason. You know, the board's responsible for an awful lot of dollars, and I think the community, it's a great way and a modern way for them to be informed. And be able to see something that might be coming up that you're going to table for the next meeting, thank you, thank you.
Just to clarify, we're not, we're, we're not being not recording and putting it on the.
No, I know, but you're giving reasons and I'm interjecting, I'm sorry, that's the ground up, but you know, you are, you are giving reasons about pizza and dinner. So let's talk about some real reasons why it should be videotaped.
Well, I just was saying, we won't, we're not talking about not videotaping, we're just talking about.
We're doing live streamed with a closed caption.
Now, my, I would say similar to what Peggy said, I'm not comfortable if you know that we're not compliant, until we can solve that, that issue. I wish we had the data to know how many people do watch while the meeting is going on. My experience with closed captioning is it's really, it's really pathetic. So, and I would not, I would not like that to be part of our meeting, so that it, it lags and then it changes words, it leaves. In my own experience, basic upstairs at the twenty-four hour business, because they read, all theirs are closed captions. And it is, they got the wrong words in there, they skip over things, leave things, get left out, and the people are ahead, I mean, it's. So they go to like a commercial break and then you keep, you keep watching it and keep watching till they finally get it up there.
So if you like quality, so what you're saying is you like quality closed captions, we know you have to do it. So if you like quality, so what you're saying is you like quality closed captions? We know how to do it.
I know, but is there, well, is there quality closed captions?
With the.
Whatever we.
That's what best we can do.
It's what we have to ask.
Yeah, that's what we have to ask about this stuff, cost and all.
Whatever. And so that would be to me, that will be in connection with the summertime to know what we can get as like a package deal. As far as agenda, if it's in the agenda online and everything provides that service.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, we could, we'd still, uh, moving forward, if we'd, if the agreement is to stop live streaming till we come into compliance, however, we would still post them the day after.
Mm-hmm.
Um, doing through our closed captioning process. Um, and I remember Perry saying, you know, and I think remember Wolf saying that um there, they believe, yes, we should bring back a contract to get everything updated in here. Regardless, so that the sound and everything is um um better, um and quality is better, so.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So that's kind of what I'm hearing from at least half, so.
Right, I would agree. We need to be doing it well, we're doing it, yes.
And we could do kind of a thought exchange topic on it as well to get some feedback from from folks uh related to live persons.
That's fine, yeah.
So give maybe some feedback. I mean, that may, that'd be the only way we might be able to get a little bit of feedback from folks is, you know, um.
Yeah.
Instead of really put the live streaming on hiatus until, till.
As long as it's posted the next day.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
That means that's more efficient.
And it's put on and now we're notifying now that we're probably to put it on hiatus because of compliance. Would you have their thoughts?
We'll put it, no, we'll have to put it on our website. Um, we'll note it on the website where people typically come for live streaming. We'll have to take a note that, you know. Um, do, we're working through ADA compliance uh to ensure, you know, we're in compliance. I don't think anybody wants us to be out of compliance.
That sounds, that's very.
And.
Not with ADA issue.
Yeah, no, those uh.
That's very good.
That sounds like a good idea.
So we can start with that and then um we'll continue to investigate and then we can bring back at the next meeting. Um, if it's looking, bring back some potential quotes for um for the equipment at least to get that.
Okay.
Rolling forward, so at least we're ready if and when we decide to go with closed captioning, in case.
Now, equipment is for video, not just cause it's live streaming.
Correct.
Like the change, the change for quality.
It's just for, it's. Yeah.
Okay, okay, so true.
It has, it will record it locally and then it will allow us to upload it to YouTube or whatever we decided to upload it to.
Oh. No matter what, no matter what the backend is, it's the quality of the equipment, right?
It's. It's, it's the quality of the audio and the video. The video is not bad, quality already, but we, if we're redoing it, it's a good time to redo that system.
Okay.
And I thought it was a great opportunity for the high school.
That's great.
I would think, yes, as long as the high school gets a benefit, otherwise I would think just upgrade audio and not video, but if it really benefits them, it's something they need, I.
Very good. I do, we kind of piecemeal the last system, I think, uh, a little bit, so there's probably better to get a whole new system in place, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Felix, member.
Yeah.
Thank you, love.
Thank you. That's the items tonight. Our first, uh, item fifteen, approval of a memorandum of understanding with the city of Goodvane for a currently operated adult education program. In an amount not to exceed ninety five percent of the annual adult education program grant.
Jen?
I have it, yes. I'd like to thank Jack Dixland and Dr. Mayberry for their partners, um, their continued collaboration with the city. It's our intent to partner with the city for their expertise and use of facilities to expand our adult education program. Um, at this time, we've just been offering ESL classes over multiple years and we do attended, participated in some of those classes, thank you. It's our intent to not exceed ninety five percent of that budget, so we can house a bit of that money here um for indirect costs. Um, the courses will mostly be career-based, if the city will run.
Have those identified?
Yep.
Any public comment? Any questions? Sign up, motion. Second. I have a little discussion.
That's awesome.
One. Um, well, we are teachers that we've been doing, or the city will be combination.
Okay, well, mostly do the cities. Um, Jack Dixon is in conversations with them right now, although I can't, I, we're not sure what the outcome would look like. Whether we'll keep the ESL class in room ninety one or we'll go down to the city, we're just not sure at this moment.
So the city will be aware of whatever adult education requirements are?
Yes, yes, I've worked with Darla at Calbe, so has Dr. Mayberry. Um, they would have students have to be monitored in the APX program that's online.
Yes.
Um, but Darla Calbe thinks this is an innovative choice and supports our, our selections and machine, our support.
Thank you. On favor?
I.
Oh, stupid votes, sorry, Piper.
Yes.
Yes.
On favor?
Hi, I suppose, Carrie's four oh one. Item sixteen, approval of independent contractor agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Laveby for the social skills facilitation project in the amount of thirty four thousand twenty dollars.
Dr. Dixon, thank you. So as we have all appreciated this vital partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. Um, this, this particular action item covers seven staff members for three sites. It allows our students to participate in facilitated social opportunities, developing social skills. We are most proud that it does engage with young students for reduction in problem behaviors. So we appreciate this partnership with the Boys and Girls Club.
Public comment? Any more questions? Motion, second. Second. Carol? Um, discussion?
I'm grateful we have it.
Makes a big difference.
I just had a question on um, on our side of this. Do we have, do we oversee this in other words, that we make, to make sure they always show up? I mean, we haven't had any votes of that. It's been consistent and.
Yes, yes, our site, our comment, yes.
Thank you.
Piper?
Yes.
Members on favor? Aye. Oppose, Carrie's four oh one.
Item seventeen, approval of agreement with Kelvin Education Inc. for the nineteen, twenty nineteen twenty school year at a cost not to exceed five thousand eight hundred fifty eight dollars. Dr. Dixon?
Thank you. So this is on behalf of Dr. Keller. We believe it's a compliment for our, our best practice of our standard of care, which is our. Our surveys that we're doing, our virtual screeners twice a year, but this would offer um the opportunity to administer pulses to students. And a pulse is, it 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 checks in on students and uh over a couple of different self constructs, three to five questions. Could be um self-efficacy, how are you doing today, do you need to see someone? And so should a student indicate that they need to see someone, Dr. Keller and publicly counselor or student support specialist would immediately receive an email. That a student would um could get support that day. So um we would like to pilot this in a few grade levels. To see, uh, one, we want to make sure that we're good on the response. So if a student indicates they have a need, that we are, we close that loop immediately. Um, and we'd like to see if it offers us more information that we're getting in our climate surveys. So it's, it would be the information over a period of time, so we could perhaps reduce some of the items in our hemispherical climate survey. So we're interested in both, both ongoing and then we have no interest in discontinuing the virtual screening, so we're compliments, so.
Public comment? More questions? Motion, please. Second. Second. No, Peggy, please. Any discussion?
Well, first, I'm grateful that you guys put that on capital information in it. I just kind of hold on.
Okay.
And then I love this idea of, you know, we're looking at the students at two different times. Obviously, people are working with them, but it gives them a way to be able to update, maybe with a nudge, use this nudge theory, right, give them what update. And then we're really um backing up the support and feeding a little, to get them the support between those two, those two times that we're. Cause I know we're not just checking those two times, not checking the rest of the time, but I like the fact that there's a system and something that ties into something that they're very used to. Technology-wise and it applies much there, which.
We identified grade levels?
Not yet.
And, excuse me, and looking at the, it's, this contract is extensive. And I had some questions that I had speak to Swinson earlier, um, about student, about protecting student data. I was just concerned, they have so much in their contract that it, they may, that may be standard now to put all that language in there to protect themselves as a company. But that just, it just maybe have a little bit of concern about that. The other thing was if they, if they upgrade their systems, that we then may need to upgrade whatever we have, so it's complimentary. And so I don't know if there's any answer to that, but I just uh was mostly concerned about student data.
And I could slide a response for you in board weekly. Could I, could I?
Sure. Sure.
I can do a quick one. So, um, this contract is kind of a split contract, so it's actually contains all of the new student privacy requirements in the state of California.
Okay.
Oh.
So.
That's why it's so extensive.
That's why it's so extensive. So um, it's, if you look at page one fifty eight, that's the California Student Data Privacy Agreement. That's required now moving forward.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll get to the contract after.
So it's, it is dense, yes.
Oh, okay. It is.
It's all because of the fact that there's requirements under data protection, which is, which is great. It's what needs to be done, that's the expectation. So uh, Mike Morrison is, he's the one who actually requests the data to be added, that that makes sure that we have that.
Yeah.
Um, as an addition, and we plan on having that to addition to the contracts that have, have our student data to pull in as well.
I guess with, with not knowing that piece, I was, I was thinking, have they had problems already?
Yeah.
That's, that's right.
It's nice to know we're.
Yeah. The, the responsibility still rests with us to protect student data, is that correct? So if we contracted the company, then we need to make sure.
Correct, so we're holding them.
That. And then the other, only other question I was curious about was, uh, we get group data or just individual data or both? I mean, is, if you do a grade level, is it going to be all students or is it going to be targeted students?
It would be all. Um, there's a little icon of a dog that pops up in the corner. Kids can make the dog sleep, it's a little way for a certain number of hours and come back.
All students.
So you can nudge it away, but the dog comes back, um, and it's just three to five questions. If it indicate unhappiness or trouble, then you have the option to get help. Um, it is confidential, but it is not anonymous if you indicate you want help.
Okay.
So it is group data, unless you say, I want help, then that's what will happen.
What's your question? I need to, and then you, is it one you're part of?
My question, is it two for public comment?
Technically, yes.
Do you mind?
My question is, with this being a pilot program, is this going to be a program that parents have an option of opting out of, or is this going to be required?
No, with, with parents have the option to opt down.
Okay.
Cause there is a notification piece for it.
There is.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, so would this, would this help, not replace, but would this help when Sarah is working so diligently and creating, um, you know, in IEP or five four, creating. Different systems so students can get help during class or something and she just be always kind of creative ways? Would this help with that? Cause then you're not having to think of all these different ways to, to allow a student to get that help. They would just have. The little dog nudging them to see if they're okay, basically, is that help?
So there are items, yes, so there are items that we can help select within those constructs that we could put together. The constructs are used theirs, um, and they are continuing to develop additional items, I guess.
Okay.
So it, what Carol's referred to, when you exist like pilot of support, right, any worries that maybe one of the years has been done?
Yeah, cause you know, it's like if, if they need to leave the classroom, they need to get, right, whatever the arrangement is of how they leave, now everyone's. If it works well and pilots well, it's kind of everyone's kind of on that same system. Of that's how they can get that support. Now, would the teacher be notified if they said that, like that they needed support?
It would be Dr. Keller and the school's uh student support specialist or the counselor.
So they could leave. Would they send?
Then, yes, we need to look back.
That, okay. And I'm getting one of the leads, I was trying not to get them, so I'm gonna think about it.
Okay.
Let me think through like the lead part of it.
Okay.
Okay, second.
Yep.
Piper?
Yes.
Members on favor? Aye.
Oppose, Carrie's four oh one. Uh, item eighteen, approval of a contract with Apex Learning, providing Apex Learning digital curriculum and services. For the purpose of online credit recovery courses effective June first, twenty nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty, in an amount not to exceed seven thousand.
Dr. Dixon?
Thank you. So this is on behalf of Dr. Mayberry.
He's in favor, isn't he?
Yes, he put together a cluster of district teachers, site, uh, site administrators and district administrators to review a number of programs. Apex was the program we bring to you for um our final selection. It was most used in Orange County, but it also offers us a lot of options. We'd like to, I, to use it this summer in some, in some of the credit recovery courses.
Any public comment? More questions? Motion, please.
Second.
Second. Peggy, and discussion?
I just had a question. There was something in here where I can't find it, where they talked about materials or here's, I'm there, particularly additional materials, costs. Do you anticipate that or will what we have take care of it?
We're still getting to know the program. Um, I think we'll have a better sense of that um at the end of summer school.
Okay. And I noticed that there is a, a parent access component.
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Members on favor? Aye.
Oppose, Carrie's four oh one. Item nineteen, approval of an agreement with the Orange County Department of Education for project-based learning professional development in an amount not to exceed eight thousand one hundred twenty five dollars.
Dr. Dixon?
Thank you. This comes at the recommendation of the Professional Development Advisory Committee. We'd like to offer this training for three days in the summer and one half day during the school year, so follow up about six weeks later. Um, it, it allows teachers to explore lessons signed, identify driving questions and construct models to teach. It will be an optional training provided for teachers this summer.
Public comment? Anybody question?
Yes, um, will only people who haven't taken before be able to take it or can people take it a second time?
I think they could take it a second time. We've offered it, um, my daughter, the messenger was here, but we haven't offered it since.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
I, I understand there are some people who are interested or refreshers.
Motion, please. Second.
No, Peggy, um, I just to follow up to that question. If there's twenty five that you're going to use, would you give purpose to those who had not had it at all?
Of course.
Okay, yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Word, on favor? Aye.
Oppose, Carrie's four oh one. Item twenty, approval to increase contract with Nicole Miller and Associates, H to conduct risk management investigations with an not to exceed amount of thirty thousand. And please present the question, actually.
Thank you. Carrie. So um each July of each year, we usually bring this contract to you and we hope not to have to use it all. Unfortunately, this has been one of the years where we've had to use more of this contract, so we need uh to request authority uh with another not to exceed amount of thirty thousand dollars to get us through the end of this year. We don't anticipate we would need all of that, uh, but we would like to have it just in case.
Public comment? More questions?
So what does that bring the total to?
So our prior contract, uh, we approved it uh for July of two thousand eighteen was eighty five thousand, so we have met that. Um, we have probably another fifteen thousand that we need to pay. And so this thirty thousand would, we would have been a buffer to cover us then should we need to do any further investigations before the end of June.
Motion? Second. Second. Any discussion? Okay.
I was thinking, should I?
Piper?
Yes.
Members on favor? Aye.
Oppose, Carrie's four oh one. Uh, item twenty one, approval to renew contract with Durham School Services LP for school transportation services on a unit cost basis for the twenty nineteen twenty fiscal year in an amount not to exceed one million seven hundred thousand. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, Professor. I'm gonna actually turn this over to Ryan Zane.
To Ryan. Oh, great.
I put a lot of work into these agreements that I made it, so I'm gonna.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Thank you. Uh, Durham School Services, um, completed their original contract period and this is the first renewal. It can be renewed up to four times for about your total length of contract. The uh, the budget is increased slightly just to cover athletic transportation costs, grabbing those trips to this uh, this service period.
Public comment? More questions?
So is it all athletic trips or a lean season athletic trips or?
Well, the intention is to use this bid um to provide the services for all athletic trips. Um, the prior years, they've been outsourced to various service providers, I think you've seen JFK or Pursuit over there on Cajun. Um, and since we have a, a, a strong public bid here, solid unit cost and the, and the provider provides us good service already. Um, it doesn't make any sense why we should use an outside vendor, but we should be purchasing through our current, you know, accepted bid.
So, what was it?
Did we make a motion?
I can't remember.
No, we didn't, let's make sure there wasn't a question.
Well, so just.
Wait, do we have a motion?
So this is who we question for all field trips also.
Now, question.
Mm-hmm, and currently, um, this company, Durham School Services, who provides our regular, um, you know, homeschool bus, it does provide our field trip transportation services.
But it has been an added cost.
We increased the budget. It was costing a hundred and thirty thousand dollars last year in athletic transportation trips. And so we added that cost to this budget here. It's a unit cost contract and that gives us flexibility um with the the unit cost of those upcoming trips.
Motion now, please.
Senator? A second?
Carol, thank you. Any discussion? I just had um, it it was seems like, I remember, the DURFs could not do athletic trips because they didn't have enough classes to do home from school and when the student needs leave, so that's been solved.
That's been solved.
Oh.
So that's, uh, with that did come up early in our our conversations. And uh with the purchase of the new CNG bus this year, our fleet, our contract went to, I think we have thirteen of those transit buses. It did free up some additional buses and they were able to move some resources around to to provide the services. So they've actually been providing services um outside of contract on that unit cost basis um to support the other providers. And it's been going well. And I think they've been providing since about February or so. So.
Good.
For a good list.
Good, thank you.
This is gonna make it sound very easy. That took a lot of logistical planning and negotiations with Durham that we did, so that's why I wanted to give them credit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Piper?
Yes.
Members on favor?
I.
Oppose, Kerry's four oh one. Item twenty two, approval to renew contract with American Logistics Company LLC for individualized transportation services on a unit cost basis for the twenty nineteen twenty fiscal year in an amount not to exceed three hundred and sixty thousand.
Ryan?
American Logistics Company provides our home school and outside of district transportation services for our um sorry, I'm using the right language for the specialized uh trips for those students. Uh, the budget is unchanged from last year, it remains the same. They've provided um qualified and um sufficient services. And we'd like to see if their contract was to be a renewal uh from the original agreement for next fiscal year.
Public comment? Any more questions? Motion please.
Senator? Second?
No, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, so I just, we've had good reports on the service that they've provided.
Yes, yes. Um, when we went prior to starting the discussions with them to renew, uh met with special, our special ed department, our director, um and that quality that is positive. We felt there was no reason not to. They did not raise the rates, um so it was an added benefit. So we're looking at the budget the same. And um we feel that um that's the best fit for our district is to renew the contract and go into the second year of the contract for the services.
Thank you, I appreciate that you looked into that part of it. Piper?
Yes.
Thank you. Our members on favor?
I.
Oppose, Kerry's four oh one. Item twenty three, approval to renew contract with Brightview Landscape Services Inc. For ground transportation services on a unit cost basis for the twenty nineteen twenty fiscal year in an amount not to exceed three hundred and sixty thousand.
Ryan?
Yes, this is for Brightview Landscape Services. They provide our routine landscape maintenance here and also our irrigation repairs. Um, this is the first renewal to the original agreement. Um, the budget remains the same at three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We feel they provide us sufficient services, um and we would like to renew their their contract.
Thank you. Public comment? Any questions? Is this, does it still working in the organic fashion?
It is. Last year, um it was all performed with uh organic non-toxic substances along with old ash and meat pulling. And um this does uh remain uh as it included in this services. Moving forward for this next year, it may be done the same manner.
And it looks like satisfied with that?
Yes, they um they use those alternative um organic non-toxic substances and they still have all all the right protocols. And so you'll still see some signage posted for application periods so that people are put on notice. Um, but absolutely, it does include that as part of the services at the unit cost rates. So we're pleased to continue to provide those extended budget. A lot of extra oversight by Mr. Zane as well, making sure that they are following.
Following the leads. Thank you. Any other questions? Motion please.
Senator? A second?
Carol? Any discussion? I'm really glad that we were able to be responsive to that request and to change to using the organic compounds. I think it's, you know, we're, we hear more and more about that as far as the recognition of the hazards and particularly with our school facilities, so I appreciate that.
And the legalization of.
Yes.
Right? You spend so much of your proactives.
Piper?
Yes.
Members on favor?
I.
Oppose, Kerry's four oh one. That's our last actual item. Our last item is item twenty four, board member request for items for future meetings, request for information or critical comments.
Um, I would like to request an identification to have one on campus come in to give her information when I have a presentation. Um, Dr. Keller wasn't able to go with Mary, they were the student support specialists. But their program doesn't cost us money, we just need to give them a place to do it. And it seemed to have amazing results. Needs see needs that we can't meet. They, for instance, they have a recovery program or an exchange program, we call it for suspensions. Not just drugs, but if you're caught carrying a weapon, if you are fighting, you don't, you have the option to come to this program instead of being suspended. And the results have been amazing. It was sixty kids in the last two years that have gone to the program, only two returned and got in trouble in any way. We were uh, we were able to meet the principal of the middle school and the high school and the assistant, the assistant principals, as well as a lot of the kids and their SRO officer whose name is Officer Clemente. And he, all of them could not say enough good things about this program. Officer Clemente knows Officer Carnell, yes, and said it has made all the difference in the world to him. He sees kids that are having issues, he has someplace to send them now. It's not counseling, it's uh, it's kind of students helping students, more student run. And students don't miss class. And the group that I saw was amazing. It was all kinds of, you know, I mean, we all have issues. And so some kids had cutting issues, some kids had bulimia, some kids uh on the spectrum. Some kids had tensions or um suicidal thoughts, some had family problems. But they were all able to come together and support each other. And it, I I was truly amazed and I would love you guys to see it and see what you thought.
I missed the part of what is this?
You're talking about.
I missed what it was.
Well, I, it's it's funded, so I mean, there is, it's not, someone's paying for it.
Oh, yes, but it's not funded by the school. It's not funded by the district, their PTA funds, their foundation, they have a couple of.
Somebody that have a fund, but what are we, so is that?
But they.
Okay, number one, we have to be careful about a discussion.
We're not having a discussion.
Okay.
Well, we have to give direction if it makes like a request.
So.
There's some questions.
I'm gonna state my position. I would like more information in a board update on it, just to know about it before I could make a decision on the presentation. That would be my position. And then my discussion.
And who would you like that to come from?
Probably from Dr. Keller or somebody who can at least relay the facts of it.
Yeah.
Of the uh.
And the need, and the need for the program and the funding of it. Because this sounds like cart, I think that's the information I have was cart before the horse, right? It's like, we need to know.
What?
I don't even know what you're talking about because I don't, I'd have to know what, where you went or what program. But if it's, and if this was the school power and down, I'm just having thoughts. Well, this is Dr. Keller asking for something, or I I don't understand where this came from. But I'd like more information.
Okay. It's the one I brought up in September, but.
Okay, my comment is, I would, since we added the whole social emotional component with Dr. Keller and our two social workers, that I would like them to be, once we analyze if they felt what we're doing and the variety of things that we're doing, if we need. Sometimes you can add too much. You know, that's what I would like to analyze, whether we would even have a presentation on this.
Well, we can only direct Dr. Mallory though.
Okay.
True, but I'm just giving my, oh, comment, oh.
I should like to do it, you can do it.
I got it.
Sorry.
That's fine, I got it.
I mean, I have to give permission to Dr. to Dr. Keller, this is my opinion.
I, I agree with you.
That's the, that's the department I see it falling into.
Yeah, yeah, but they would bring the, yes, forward, yeah. I'm agreeing with that. Just gonna make sure.
Well, we have to have at least a majority that wants to have, wants to have staff spend any time on it at all. And we're in agreement with that.
I'm in agreement that if this was something that Dr. Keller's area needs and Dr. Mallory, we can turn Dr. Mallory to find out whether they need it and so that they provide us information about it.
Yeah, I'll work with staff. We'll come back with something to the weekly and then that can formulate our next step from the board. That's okay first, so then.
Yeah.
I'll get some more information from you, remember Perry, about who you spoke with uh specifically like the school site and we'll get Dr. Allman's on board.
Okay. And it's, it's middle school too, so maybe Jenny could.
They're on the same campus.
Yeah, no question. Same.
Awesome.
Um, that's, okay. Anything else?
Nope.
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Okay, I just wanted to uh comment on a program that was on a couple of weeks ago. It was on Screen Time. It was quite interesting. I didn't watch all of it then, I guess I was feeling like it was evening time and it was really a documentary style program, but there was definite research being done into it. It was really interesting on the lack of interaction with a lot of parents with their young children. And that they need that for the proper growth and development. And um it's sometime I'm sure it will be back on. It was uh done by Diane Sawyer, this two hour program. Um, but I think it really is looking at some examination of maybe taking some steps back to what we can see as progress, but then there are also the downsides for for development, for social interaction and feeling self competent. It's really interesting premises. I also want to say, I thought it was excellent for our community, I had Denise Pope experience. Um, it was really gratifying to me to hear her compliment the calendar change and the definite break that will come at the holiday time and the fact of the new bell schedule. And she was, and the fact that she was spent a lot of time that day with other groups at our school sites. Um, the information that she provided the parents on the need for the PDF, the.
Playtime, family time, downtime.
Was to me a message certainly a lot of us need to really hear. And they also the information on the on colleges and where people end up. And it was just, I thought, not only was her presentation good, but the information was, I think I, community really needed now to hear that. And I hope that she asked people to go and leave and share it with ten other people. Because it's uh, if I heard anything that was alarming to me, it was a level of cheating. And I think if that's what we're driving our students to, then we really need to rethink. And the other really gratifying thing was the high level of our students felt they had someone they could go to at the school site. And that has gone up. And so I think our programs that we put in place have really paid off. That was a really positive note. That was a high percentage, but the, if anybody wanted to have an issue with something, I think they could have an issue with the 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 students that felt that it was more important for the parents to see what grade they got than if they cheated together. And that, I think as adults, we have a responsibility to to change that. Um, I wanted to know, we had an answer yet on either two things, which you don't need to answer now. When we talked about the posting on the website, the public request information, the legality of that. And the other was um the Aspen folks that are coming, if they felt cabinet should be involved.
Afternoon for cabinet.
Afternoon, okay. Thank you. And then just um, Dr. Keller didn't ask me this, but I know he had some definite input at our last meeting and coming up on the twenty eighth, just to to uh make sure that we find out what information he's looking for. Because I don't know, I know he's been away, so.
Relate to the.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can send him an email and make sure that, right, related to the topic on that.
Yeah, so we have, we were looking at that, that, the minutes to verify my questions for basically they asked. We prepared the presentation.
Thank you. Uh, student reps, do you have anything that you'd like to ask or have on a future agenda or have us talk about and not talk about? Just like finish up, just go on, I'm studying, because I'm a little tired.
Yeah.
So I have a motion for Germans.
Second.
Okay, and our next meeting will be Tuesday, May twenty eighth, and here, it's in the boardroom. All right, like, oh, did you ask?
Hi.
Thank you.